Good morning. The time is now 11:02 and a quorum of the board is present. State Board of Education's special meeting of February 6, 2017 is called to order. First item of the agenda is approval of the agenda and order of priority. Are there any items to add or delete from the agenda at this time? Hearing none. Is there a motion to accept?
No move.
It's part.
Moved and supported. Any questions or comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Discussion action items: Today's special meeting has been convened for a discussion on Michigan's Every Student Succeeds Act Plan. We are committed to providing information to the board and seeking your input and answering questions about Every Student Succeeds Act Plan. Therefore, we've scheduled a special meeting for that purpose today. We'll begin with a PowerPoint presentation led by Vanessa Kiesler, Deputy Superintendent for Educator, Student, and School Supports. Board members will have the opportunity to comment and ask questions. We plan to break around 12:30 for lunch and then reconvene to continue the ESSA discussion. After the ESSA discussion has concluded, there will be time for public comment. We expect to adjourn around 3:00 P.M. Vanessa, please begin the presentation.
Okay. Good morning, everyone, and thank you for joining us for a lengthy discussion on ESSA. Just to overview what I was hoping we could do today and manage our time so that we do have a good discussion on each of these topics, I wanted to briefly talk about where we're at with stakeholder feedback. That will be just very short. And then thought we would start with the accountability proposal and work on that before lunch. I'm assuming that will take us up till lunch. And then look at some of the key components of the support system, spend some time on the educator quality initiatives, which we have not talked about extensively at the board table for a couple of months. We did do a whole presentation on it, but it was before our new board members. And then end with the assessment system, particularly since this proposal does not require us to say much about the assessment system. I put that last because while very important, it's not as time-sensitive as some of the other issues that are required in the ESSA proposal. Cassandra was nice enough to provide some questions ahead of time when we asked what some of the issues might be. There are a couple of quick. Some of them were big questions and some were short, so I thought I'd handle these two short ones quickly. Is the top-to-bottom list itself included in ESSA? No. The A-to-F system is intended to replace both the top-to-bottom list and the accountability scorecard, which is the color-coded scorecard that we have. And then you ask about options for school turnaround and flexibility. And so, yes, there's options. The four models that were part of ESEA Flex are no longer prescribed. They're not in there at all. And ESSA in general, both at the federal level and then particularly our articulation of it here in the state, is based on this idea of do a whole child comprehensive needs assessment, evidence-based practices to improve where needed, and then the partnership model for districts and schools. So it is not based on prescriptive, you must, everyone must do this, but more about identifying what's working and what's not, and then investing in the right kind of practices to improve on doing that in a more focused and partnership-based way with those districts with F schools.
So under the partnership model, then the districts really, that we'll partnership with, really decide the direction that they want, what problems they're going to solve, what goals they're going to solve, with the partners coming to the table to offer assistance in solving them. But it is the local district directing.
Right. Another question was asked about measuring success and failure, which I thought, that's a bigger question. There's a lot of, like, how do we measure success overall versus how do we measure success in certain parts of this? So I wanted to talk about how we've conceived of measuring success and failure in the partnership model. So just briefly, any district with at least one F school will have the opportunity to be a partnership district. They'll have 90 days to do that comprehensive needs assessment, to write a plan, and to have it signed by all the key signatories. They'll have 18 months to improve on benchmark measures that relate to the plan. And then they'll have three years to improve on outcome measures that relate to the plan. And one outcome must be that the school is no longer an F school.
So are we going to talk today about what constitutes an F school?
Yep, that is next on the agenda.
Okay, part of the question I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
What is the consequence if the school is still an F school?
We would describe in the partnership model what would happen next. So, for example, this isn't decided, but for example, we could say you're going to reconstitute, you're going to close and reconstitute, you're going to have the ISD takeover, you're going to have ISD, or if it's a charter school, then another authorizer, or there could be a fine. Those things, we're still talking to House and Senate leadership about, you know, 1280C and what could be in there. So our vision would be the partnership model, and then in the partnership model, it would describe, if the partnership model fails, what the next step is, so districts would know going in.
Mr. Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
Would you like this to be kind of free-flowing?
Yeah.
Since it is kind of deep, yeah, so we don't, I'd rather not wait till the whole thing to ask questions.
Yep.
Good. When you said that the district and the locals are in control of the partnership model, they still would have to, I would assume there's an approval, though? I mean, control meaning?
Well, let's say the district's an F school, and these are the five reasons they're an F school. Just for sake of discussion. I would require, obviously, that in their plan, they address those five measures. But how they address those five measures is up to them. So if they're a failing school because they don't, their curriculum isn't aligned, as an example, I would expect them to align their curriculum. But how they do that is up to them. They'd spell that out in the plan. So they're in charge. They would figure out how they're going to do it. But of course, if they're, whatever their problems are, we'd want them to address it. But I, as long as they address it, I wouldn't approve how they address it. It's up to them.
But they would, you would have to, if you say that's not going to work, then you would say, go back and?
Right. Let's say, in the five things they said, we saw that they didn't have an aligned curriculum, and they didn't address it in the plan, I would say, you need to address that.
Okay.
But I wouldn't tell them how.
There would be an approval.
Right.
We have some early models of this with the work that we've done with consent agreement districts, which is this idea of, yes, Saginaw, which is not even under one of the legislative authorities right now. This idea of what are your needs, and then what are you planning? And with all the districts we've worked with, there's been a dialogue around, well, what you're planning may or may not meet your needs, and here are some things. Superintendent's vision of a partnership model with more partners at the table, I think, broadens the discussion around what really do we need to improve. So, but we do have some working models of us getting to an approvable plan with those districts who have been under PA 436. I think I got the number right. And then, and like I said at the beginning, I recognize that these two, how do we measure success and failure, and then what's the role of high-stakes testing, are certainly things you guys will want to talk about throughout the day. I wanted to give a couple bits of information that related to those questions early on, and then we'll thread this discussion throughout. In terms of high-stakes testing, obviously, what is the role of high-stakes testing in general, in the state, in the country, in the world, is a big topic, and I'm sure we will address it or engage with that today. Just to be clear, in ESSA, what is required in ESSA? There is still required annual testing in ELA in math in grades three through eight, and then grade span in science, social studies, so once in elementary, once in middle, once in high school. And the tests are meant to provide measures of academic outcomes used in school accountability and to help drive school improvement. That's a very brief summary of what's in ESSA in the law itself. But obviously, I know you, there were a board meeting last month, we had a lot of discussions around this topic. So let me just go through this quickly, and then we'll dive right into accountability and, yes, have an iterative discussion. Just wanted you to see some of our numbers around the engagement that we've done. So you can see literally thousands of people. 144 groups or organizations represented, attendance at our various forums, our virtual focus groups, our respondents. So just to give you a sense of all the people we've spoken with, talked to, developed things with, now, and I've said this at the table before, certainly, this many people engaged in a conversation means that not everyone's ideas are in here. Not everyone was happy with decisions that were made. Some people are, some people aren't. Some people gave their feedback and didn't have any expectation around where it went. But I mean, we have, of all the plans I've worked on in the department, this is our most robust engagement at every level of the plan that we've done. So it's been, it's been good.
But to be clear, I did some Googling and found an action team agenda, and it appeared to be the first one. And the one on A through F said, we are all here to figure out the best A through F.
Right.
Not, we are all here to figure out the best accountability system.
And I've been clear that that was a team that was handed a charge from the beginning. So some of the teams were handed a charge.
So some of this engagement was not open. It was, here's what we need you to do.
It was open around a topic.
That, we did hear from groups that they didn't like A through F, so yes, we did hear that.
Prior to ESSA, we had heard that for the 10 and 10 tour, and then the Accountability Vision Committee, which met for four or five months before ESSA even started, we had heard. Given all of the aspects of?
People aren't shy in sharing their opinions.
They are not. So when that action team began under the ESSA process, they were handed a charge. The assessment system, the assessment team was handed a similar charge, figure out how to do this vision. And they were given the version of the chart that you'll see later today.
But even that has changed their own.
It has, right.
Because of input.
And the A-to-F system, while it still is an A-to-F system, has gone through many iterations, from the action team, from internal discussion, from external discussion, so. But it is absolutely true that that team was told, develop A-to-F, not develop whatever.
Correct.
Oops. Okay. Been much awaited moment to talk about our accountability system. So as we just said, the current proposal put forward through ESSA is an A-to-F grading system with multiple components. And that we want to continue to remind all of us that we want to use this accountability to help identify schools where there are needs and then drive supports and hold ourselves accountable without, within the entire system. If we say something is important to be a top-10 state, then we need to incentivize those things, but also understand where we're not getting there, where we're not making the appropriate investments, where our schools are struggling to do that piece of the 10 and 10. And so it's not just about school accountability, it's about accountability for all of us. And then we want the system to be as transparent and as simple as possible and also be fair. So discussion to this point, you know, we've been through a lot of this. So right now, I'm going to, we have a proposed A-to-F system with the following components. And then I have a chart later that shows these two. But proficiency on state tests, growth on state tests, graduation rate, English learner progress, school quality and student success, and participation on state assessments. And then let me explain more about what's in the school quality indicator. Teacher and school administrator longevity, so the percentage of teachers or administrators remaining in a school for more than four years. Chronic absenteeism, the percentage of students who are chronically absent, defined as missing 10% of possible days of school. And then advanced coursework, so students taking and passing at least one course toward post-secondary education, AP, IB, dual enrollment, career tech. And then this, during the January board meeting, we talked a lot about academic measures that were not test-based. And so we've spent a good deal of time brainstorming internally, working with our external advisory groups, asking this question about, so if a test score is not an entire measure of what a student can do academically, what else could we put in the system that holds us to academic standards but is not a test score? And so the proposal we're bringing forward is time spent or access to fine arts, music, physical education, with the rationale that these are academic subjects, actually. And also, the research shows that ELA and math scores, students who are low-performing, and particularly students who are low-income, benefit from access to these subjects in their ELA and math, so that there is a connection between access to these subjects and outcomes on some of the things we do test in. And then implementation consideration, there is some additional data collection. Let me pause there and talk about that before we get into a few technical details. If people want to ask questions on, especially the school quality indicator and then this proposal for access to fine arts, music, physical education, with some development we did after last month's board meeting, really looking to be responsive to what the board raised, this question about can test scores be the whole thing about academics?
So one thing I would add is also, libraries are also important, and I would add that to the libraries.
I'm sorry.
Libraries.
Libraries, okay.
Yes. Add that. But I hesitate, once again, are we getting back into poor schools can't afford this? And so are we getting back to the point where we're just now punishing schools for being poor again? And that's, I'm just kind of throwing that out there as a hesitation, as one of those unintended consequences that always happens when we start measuring schools like this. So that's, just throwing that out there.
Tom will call you up.
And I did, you brought up librarians. I just fast-forwarded to the transparency dashboard element, so you can see, that's on one of your slides, too. That is in here, so it's actually under support titles. So there are a number of things that we've talked about that do actually relate to academic outcomes of students, but that we think belong first on a transparency dashboard, possibly making the leap to high stakes in the future, but maybe not. So I guess I should spell out support titles. But under school climate and culture, support titles would be access to librarians, counselors.
I don't see where you're saying support titles.
All the way to the bottom, right? School climate and culture.
Oh, I see, okay. Got it, okay. Thank you.
All right. Cassandra?
Yes, sir.
Dr. Z, please, and then Tom.
I guess I would urge our board and the department to think in terms of means and ends. And what we're really looking for is student accomplishment. That's the ends. And means, whether it be a librarian or extra counseling or whatever, should be left to the judgment of the local school or district, because there will be differing needs in different communities. So I think the grades ought to be based on the ends, which, and I want to, and I think that's growth rather than proficiency, because we want to see our kids grow. And candidly, those who are in the challenged districts have more room to grow statistically than those at the upper districts. So I think we need to fashion policy that will encourage attention and reward achievement in those areas where it's most needed.
And that's certainly a discussion we had right before this meeting.
Okay.
So that's, I think we're on the same page there. I got Tom, and then Eileen, please.
I know we're going to get into weighting indicators later, but clearly, the one state assessment is still going to be at least, you know, 58%, or it's going to be very significant. And I guess just overall, to frame this, the whole next few hours, in my mind, it's no secret that I'm no fan of Common Core, and the one state assessment is aligned to that Common Core. We have, the Senate just filed a bill that the majority, Senate, Mekoff, signed on to it, and all, I mean, almost a majority of the Senate, except for two, I mean, there's, they're up to almost a majority, are saying that it should be replaced. Obviously, you don't replace something that you like. So they are saying that it's a bad, Common Core is bad. I know the House is going to be looking at it as well. So I actually would prefer, since I think that a lot of the Common Core is either age-inappropriate or harmful, that they would not do well on the exam necessarily. That if they are doing what's best for the children, that that might even be better than doing well on the exam. So with that in mind, a lot of this stuff kind of, I mean, that's my paradigm that I'm working under. So I, when we talk about high-stakes nature and tagging somebody with an A or an F, a school that's an F may very well be actually dealing with a lot of other issues and are really focusing on the child and what's best for the child as opposed to a high-stakes test. And I think I would rather them do that. So I think we need to, I'll be looking at the side effects of some of the things that we're going to be discussing, and I think they're actually harmful, not just helpful, but actually harmful. But that's, I wanted to put that out there as kind of my frame of reference.
Very good. Eileen, please.
So the amount of work that's gone into this over the years is substantial, a lot of really good quality thinking. I'm concerned, when I looked at the example that was given for, at the last board meeting, of the grading system, it was jarring to me to see two As and two Ds and having the overall grade be a B. And I would ask, because I know that you were searching for a way to grade schools and settle down the one that's commonly used for the A-through-E system in most schools in Michigan. But I would ask, I would say that the, for me, the, it's important that the A-to-F system show parents how my child's doing, or my school's doing educating my child, realistically, and are the, and making sure the measures used in the report card will derive improvement in the school. And the reason I say that is because I'm worried we're trying to smush too many factors that we feel are important into that grade system when, in reality, the transparency dashboard might be more appropriate. And I agree with Dr. Z, when you are saying that a library is really important, there are communities where the school library may not be the center. We were on the phone for the Governor's Commission on Friday, listening to a dozen administrators in the U.P. And in many of those places, they just have one elementary, one middle, and one high school. So they may have a central library that the kids use by leaving the building, or have access to digital equipment that, or digital libraries, like the Library of Michigan, that aren't the same as having a school with resources, but they may not be able to do that. So the other thing I guess I would say is, when I look at English language learners, I would look at that percentage and say, okay, in the chart that you just had a few minutes ago, do English language learners, are that, is that the driving force for all of the state for looking at this? Or is that a huge component of a benchmark system that should impact it somehow, but not the same way that participation, engagement, attendance would, for example? If we aren't careful about that, we'll end up with so much amalgamated in the A-to-F that it'll be meaningless for parents. They won't be able to choose the indicators that really make a difference for their child to attend a school that works for the kid, for the student.
Very good. Continue.
Okay. I'm going to skip these technical details real quick right here and go here, but I'm also going to change these because we just had a discussion right before now. Chris, are these right? Is grad rate 11?
Yeah.
Okay. And, that's what I wanted to do. So the discussion that we were just having, well, let me talk about the proposed weighting now. Proficiency and growth still at the highest, still equally weighted. A couple notes on this. This is the highest weight, the highest emphasis given to growth in an accountability system in a long time. This is a shift from Michigan. Whether or not we weight growth or proficiency more is a, we were just, Brian alluded to this, or Superintendent alluded to this, we were just discussing this in cabinet right before here, a pending decision. Would we want growth to be weighted more than proficiency or less? We did reduce the grad rate percentage, and we borrowed some of that. This actually would, this academic enrichment would actually fold into school quality, but I called it out here because it relates to that proposal around access to fine arts, physical education, and music that we just talked about. So in the mock-up, I'll show you next, it would be folded in, but I wanted you to see where we had thought to put it and how. So that actually makes school quality and academic enrichment 14%. So it would go proficiency, growth, school quality, academic enrichment, 14, then grad rate, English learner progress, and participation on state assessments. So this is the kind of proposed weighting right now. I think, Eileen, you were just asking questions about the percentage of English learner progress, and is that a driver? Reminder on that one, that was previously a separate accountability system under federal Title III law, and this is English learner's progress toward English language proficiency. It now needs to be part of the main accountability system. It's not a separate accountability system anymore. So that's, it's in there, and not every school has this factor. And if a school doesn't have a factor, the weight redistributes proportionally along the other ones. So it's not, you just dump it all into one of the other ones, you get a little piece. If you don't have English learner progress, that 10% distributes proportionally over the rest of the time. Whoops.
Whoops.
Yep. And I was just going to show you a new mock-up, which more accurately represents, this is actually a true calculation in the sense that this is how a B would potentially average. Before, I think we may have just had grades on there.
I think unfortunately, before, we just put grades, and they didn't measure up to anything.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We didn't do a whole lot. So we actually, this year made, this time made sure to show kind of how a B would be, what sort of distribution. Of course, as you know, there's a million ways you could get to a B. You could have a stronger score on proficiency, and this is just one. And a new mock-up that we've done, some work with, some focus group testing, some parents, continuing to try to refine. So I think, Eileen, your point was a parent needs to be able to look at it and kind of get a sense of what's going on without having to call 45 people for help or?
Or a psychometrician.
Right. Or a psychometrician. So we've been working on that. Again, this is still a mock-up, but I think it helps us see.
Quickly, just go over the peer school thing.
The which? Sorry, Brian?
Peer school.
Oh, right. So down here, this is, it was on a previous slide, too, but I didn't really focus on it. This, we want to represent, this is the idea that you can be a B school, and you can be performing better or worse than similar schools. And that we want to give some focus and some credit to schools that are outperforming similar schools, also maybe hold some schools accountable who are underperforming similar schools, not getting the outcomes that they ostensibly could based on demographics. This is aligned with kind of what the, it's not quite the same thing, but the Reading Now Network has used a strategy like this to push everybody to achieve by saying, like, look, you have peer schools who are doing better or worse than you, you could bring your performance up. So that's, this display down here is just a simple display of, here's where you are, and here's where your peer schools are. In this particular example, the school would be doing better, like, the peer schools are doing better in terms of proficiency, but worse in terms of growth. So this is like an outperforming-growth school, kind of. Which would say, hey, you're doing great with growth. That's good. And your proficiency should come up.
So we're going to give the legislature two options, one that looks like this, and then one that looks like this but does not sum up to an overall grade.
Right.
And so we'll give them the two options.
Okay.
Eileen, then, Tom?
So from a practical perspective, because the Mackinac Center has done an excellent job of capturing information on schools with high poverty, where children are moving forward rather quickly, you might just want to, as a quiet internal check, see how this system ranks specific schools on a spot check against what they're saying. One of the things that's hardest in this state is trying to bring the conversation for all stakeholders together. And the Governor's Commission's trying to do that, ESS is trying to do that, Top 10 and 10 is trying to do that. If we know that we're going to have opponents for a system we're designing right now that won't, won't understand their point of view, and we're all concerned about children at risk of doing much better, it just seems to me like that would be a great snapshot to understand.
Because others will, others will look at it if we don't.
Tom?
I won't go back on my initial opening statement about what I think about necessarily proficiency to a bad, to a bad assessment, or growth to a bad assessment. But leaving that aside, which I think is very important, there are other, isn't there also a non-academic factor that, is that participation? Or, no, well, ESS allows a non-academic?
Yep. So right now, it's called school quality, and then also that academic enrichment, 4% would be part of school quality. So we'd be at 14% on non-test-based academics, I think is how we want to be clear that we see this. We see the things in school quality as being related, I mean, as being academic measures. They're not test-based measures.
I mean, I, I get back to, and I've already, when I was in the legislature, I fought this and stopped it, going to an A, and actually, even, even within those six categories, deciding what is an A, B, C, and D. I, I'm going to assume that you're going to talk about that, too, because I don't know if 34% on English language learners is a D or a C, or what the factors that are contributing to that are.
If that's coming up next.
But, I mean, so I, I think that, that's got to be discussed as well. And then just the whole nature of us sitting here in Lansing deciding what are important to parents. I mean, you know, we're not factoring in safety. I mean, I learned from my visit to school in Detroit that a lot of those kids walk a half a mile in the dark in the morning, that are fourth and fifth graders, third and, you know, that may be preferable to closing that school and sending, having them walk a mile and a half. And that, that parent would think that that is a, is a very important thing within that school, and it's not being measured here. But there's all kinds of different measurements that, you know, to assume that we can sit here and decide that, well, it even changed while we were sitting here. It magically changed from 29 to 31, and numbers changed, and that's just the point, is that who are we to say, what is an A or a B school? And so I will highly argue or want to affirm that, you know, we shouldn't be summating to an A, summarizing to an A, B, or one grade. And I even think, within these six categories, if those are the six, I, that it shouldn't be summarized to an A, B, or C either. I think that we could put those numbers out there, and those are the numbers for that school. And again, I, in my proposal, that had good support as well, I think the school should choose what they want to put on the dashboard. What do they think is important to parents? And so maybe, you know, maybe one or two or three factors that, you know, and it's and it's a supplement to ESA. ESA says one, non-test or non-academic. We can say, well, we're doing one, but we're also gonna include two or three more. That a school can argue, it's an objective measurement, but the school can say, we feel this is important to parents, and so that's why we're putting it on the dashboard as well.
So we actually include 22 additional indicators on a dashboard, more than two, and then four within the A to F system. So if ESA required one, we're actually already over it by 26. These dashboard measures, we have talked about as well, including a points-of-pride aspect.
I'm sorry, just one more thing. What is the proof that you have that doing this system will increase academic performance?
Well, the leading states, which we ostensibly want to be a leading state, have effective, transparent, and clear school grading systems, and then effective district-focused support systems.
What are those states?
Massachusetts, for example, has done a system that grades schools and then drives supports to districts.
Any others?
Tennessee, Maryland. I mean, it depends on which ranking you use. Every state in the country has some sort of grading system. But what we've seen when we look at systems change in the, it's two things. It is not, you're right in saying that the existence of an A to F, or a color, or whatever, alone won't make a big difference. What you see in states that have seen a difference in not only overall student performance, but the closing of student achievement gaps, is they had a system that clearly identified on measures related to strategic plans. They set high standards for all students, and they drove supports strategically to the schools and districts where performance was not happening. I would argue where we have not done as well as we could've in the last few years is the driving of supports. It was the same kind of intentionality that you might see in like Massachusetts. So...
You know, I know that, you know, when you were in there, you did the good work on the report card, but I just wanna remind everyone that the conversation in the legislature and the Governor's Office during the Detroit package was to do a report card for the whole state. Now, they chose only to do one for Detroit, giving us time to develop a system. So this still would take legislative action, and if they chose not to do a report card and choose to do something else, that's fine. But again, I do owe them a, at least a version of a report card that we think is the best direction.
So this isn't going to the ESA plan, this is going to the...
It is, but we can amend it, to change it if we decide to do something different.
But if it's going in the ESA plan, and it needs legislative approval, then aren't we giving the feds something that could potentially never come to fruition?
Yep, that's true. And that we would change it, but we would just amend it.
Okay, can I ask, I have, there's something on here, there's a button, it says "label." What is that?
Can we go back to here?
Yeah.
Way up in the, under Michigan Department of Ed, it says "NA on label."
Yeah, Chris, what is that? Oh, yep, thank you. That's another piece that we haven't gotten to yet, on these additional labeling that are required only by the feds, comprehensive, targeted, and additional targeted. If they had one of those labels, that's where that would go. Our proposal, this, well, I mean, sorry, we're jumping all over from how this sequentially, so I'm answering things we haven't talked about yet.
That's okay, if you're getting to it, that's fine, I was just curious.
I always wonder how to order things best, and try to figure out what we're gonna talk about first, and then inevitably we do it the opposite way.
So we'll come back to that, come back to the...
Yes, I will talk more about that. There was a question on how the...
One item, what Cassandra brought up, in the legislature, I often heard, well, but it's, we have to do this because it's already, the feds, we said, told the feds. So, you know, if, if for some reason we put this harmful letter grading in our ESA plan, nobody's gonna say, we have to do this.
Nope, you won't hear me say that.
Absolutely not.
Okay, let me...
Greed.
Let me actually talk about this quickly, because I think it relates quite well, it was Cassandra's question, it relates quite well to the point that was just brought up. So, the statewide system of support requires three additional labels. Comprehensive support, targeted support, and additional targeted support schools. Comprehensive support are lowest-performing schools, and then targeted support...
We're on page 10 now.
Yeah, thank you. Targeted support and additional targeted support are schools with systematically low-performing subgroups in various ways. Here's what we want to do right now, actually, is not submit methodologies for identifying those schools. For this reason, we want it maximally aligned to A to F to avoid confusion, and the supports need to be aligned to the partnership district. So we wanna run A to F, and then continue the discussions that are ongoing around, what is low performance, what is subgroup performance, what should we do around gaps? And then I think bullet three is most important. There's state conversations on this topic now, and so we don't want to put anything forward federally until we've resolved this as a state. We wanna make a data-driven decision, and we have time. So this is how we'd like to handle this with the feds. We know we want, we know that we committed to put forward an A to F system through this process. So that is a Michigan decision. If Michigan decides to move away from A to F, we would just tell the feds we're doing something different. On this one, we're not even willing to propose a methodology until we've had more state conversation to avoid even the appearance of what you're suggesting, which is, well, we have to do this because of the feds, or we have to commit ourselves. So we're leaving space in this application in many ways, and in some very explicit ways, to say, we don't know what a low-performing school is exactly yet in this state, or we don't know exactly where we wanna be on subgroup performance and achievement gaps. So, Cassandra, that's why there's no labels right now, because we're actually proposing no additional labels for the time being, until we've had time to see where federal discussions go, see where state discussions go, and make a decision that reduces confusion for everyone.
Well, I do know that, Mr. Chair, you know, the secretary has to sign off on a change from the ESA plan. So if we submit something, I know that the person being considered right now is, sits on the Jeb Bush's fee board, and they are very, they love the A through F and the high-stakes testing. So she may very well, if she is secretary, may say, you wanna change it, your legislature said you're gonna change it, but you're not gonna change it because Title I money isn't at stake.
Actually, the...
They could, right? She could.
Actually, no, the new ESA law prohibits the Secretary of Education from denying a plan from a state. That is, they felt it was an overreach of the previous Secretaries of Education, and so they removed that authority.
We had this discussion last month. They can withhold, if she can't deny it, she can withhold $2 billion of our title money.
It's not clear, there's this, they have to give you commentary on it. Now, there's also breaking the law, which I don't know, and some of it is, the law passed, and then the administration changed, so how they're gonna choose to interpret it. But there is a line in the law where the Secretary of Ed is not allowed to deny a plan from a state. The whole purpose of ESA was to return authority to the states.
Okay, but we did have that discussion. They can deny it, they can deny $2 billion. She may say, we're not denying the plan, but we're not gonna give you your $2 billion if you, you know, if you change it from A to F to what you want.
We never said they would deny giving us $2 billion if we didn't do A to F. We said if we don't comply with elements of the federal law, a potential consequence that can come to a state is withholding the federal funds.
See, A through F is not in the law, so I would argue she, in that case, could. But, but let's say, in our testing vision, and testing says you have to test three through eight. And let's say we, I'm not saying we're doing this, but let's say we decided, well, we're gonna just randomly test, we're not gonna test every student. That technically would be a violation of the law. She could tell us no, or she could withhold funding. Because that's a violation.
Yeah, and then the other part that's up in the air, truthfully, is regulations take the effect of law once they're adopted. So regulations are still moving around, though, as always happens with the change of administration. So there is some ambiguity. Let me back up to some details on cuts, which was a question you guys were asking a minute ago. This gets a little technical. So...
What page are you going to?
I backed up to page eight. Actually, I backed up before that, to page six.
Page six.
Okay, so within each of those, I'll go through this once, and last question, and Chris Janser's here to also assist with this portion, if we wanna get into more detail. Within each of those individual indicators, so if you think about that, that mock-up I showed you, proficiency, growth, grad rate, all of them, results are aggregated for each student group to get an indicator value. So you get a value for proficiency, you get a value for growth. You then divide that value by the goal to get a percent of which the goal has met, and that's the indicator index. So each indicator is on a scale of 0 to 100. Here's an example. School A has an EL progress indicator value of 35%. If the statewide goal was 55%, you would take their value, divide it by the goal, and you'd get that they met 63.64% of the index. School B has a value of 60, the goal was 55, so it's greater than 100, so they get all the points in that index, yes.
Where does the statewide progress goal come from?
The statewide progress goal comes from, we take a, on each indicator, we take a distribution of the values by school. So think of a normal distribution. And we look for a value that's at the 75th percentile, so where 25% of schools are doing better and 75% are doing worse. That number that corresponds with the 75th percentile becomes the statewide goal.
So you've guaranteed that 75% of the schools will not meet that goal?
Initially, because it's a high, except they're getting portions of it. So like here, this is the main thing that's different with this than previous systems. In the past, it would've been exactly what you're saying, Cassandra. If the statewide goal was 55, and you got 35, you just got no points for that thing. You failed. Here, if the statewide goal is 55, and you get 35, you get 63.64% of your points, because you got 63.64% of the way there.
This is very complicated. We had to walk through this several times today.
It gets, what's really complicated is, as schools continue to improve, that that goal is going to continue to go up.
No, we don't, it's a cemented goal. That does not change.
So over time, as schools improve, more schools will meet the targets, and more schools will be A and B schools, which is good, right?
Yes.
We're making that assumption based on what, though?
I mean, mathematically, if schools improve and the targets don't move, then more schools will meet the targets year over year.
Every time we've done this, so for example, years ago, we raised the bar saying a higher percentage of kids needed to pass to meet the standard, and initially, the scores all dropped, but then each year, they improved. Same with SAT, ACT. The standard was here, it was raised, and every year, schools marched towards that goal. So I think statistically, we can demonstrate, in past, when we raised the bar, over two, three, or four years, more and more schools met that bar. The point is, you gotta keep that bar consistent. You can't, you can't say, okay, jump 10 feet, and then you jump 10 feet, now we're gonna make you jump 11 feet, now we're gonna make you jump 12 feet. We're gonna say, you always have to jump at 10 feet.
So we're setting the bar high initially, but holding it steady while we make progress toward it, and giving schools incremental points toward it, which again, in the past, it was either you met the target or you didn't. You got a zero or a one. Now it's like you get parts of a point, which is more fair for schools and the achievement they're getting, with the kids they're getting it with, and then holds them accountable where they're not.
How has this impacted the assessment changes?
This would be, this is all assessment-agnostic. We can accommodate a change in the assessment system with this.
And is this score based on WIDA and that system as opposed to the state assessment?
In this particular example, it would be. But if we had done this as proficiency, it would be on the state assessment.
Okay, so for Tom and Nikki, it's a special assessment system for English language learners.
WIDA.
Is separate.
Right.
My exchange student...
A separate assessment?
Yeah, so students of ELL background of certain years until they reach proficiency, take the WIDA assessment and the state assessment.
I heard one of the concerns with ESA was that only 1% of students in the state are allowed to take that, which is a fraction of special ed students.
That's a different assessment. These is for English language learners. So whenever a student is an English learner, they have to achieve...
My exchange student is taking it right now, for example.
Are we gonna talk about special, special ed and that 1%?
We've covered it at last month's Board meeting, but I can reiterate. We, yes, it's 1% can take the alternate assessment. Michigan has never had a problem with that.
We've never had a standard.
There's a bit of a change with the 2%, but in general, 80% of our students with disabilities take the general assessment.
Should they?
What?
Should they?
Yes.
Is it 1%?
Because their IEP specifies that they should be taught general content standards with accommodations as opposed to alternate content standards.
So it's really the parent and the school district making the decision in the IEP, what assessment they should take?
Yes.
Is it 1% for the entire state, or is it 1% per school?
It's 1% for the entire state, and then we have a whole process, which is, if you thought this was technical, we can get into it more, where we help out our 1%, like, there are clusters of special education students, so we kind of borrow against the state. We still do that, right? So there's a, yeah, with the state, it's a 1% for the state, and then we have...
But again, it's driven by the IEP. It's driven by the parent and the district reaching an agreement in the IEP about what assessment they're gonna be taking. If they're in the general...
We don't butt against that 1%? I read that it's way low, that most states are way above 1%.
I mean, it's possible with the new law, there might be some things that we'll have to work through, but in general, any student in Michigan who needs to take the alternate assessment can take the alternate assessment, we'll work through how we do that. In the past, we've not had an issue with this.
We've not reached above 1%.
We've had a, yeah, and it is IEP-driven, so. And we worked really hard to help educate educators and parents around how to make these decisions for students with disabilities, and to support them in doing it.
Can we get the numbers, just so we can share them with the board? I mean, that's easy to get, right? I'm not asking, if I'm asking for something difficult, tell me.
It's that there's, there are some changes in the law, so the old numbers and the future numbers might, they're not completely predictive. But again, I think we need to, Michigan has a strong foundation of serving our students with disabilities appropriately. We wanna keep building on that foundation, and if it runs up against a federal law, then we'll push back, and we'll do something about it, but...
I mean, it might be appropriate, but I've understood from my limited amount of visiting schools that it can provide a disincentive to accept special education kids because where they're likely to be on the proficiency potentially, it might bring down their scores, and so the incentive is to pass these kids off and to not accept them. So what are the side effects? I'm just wanting to make sure I understand.
Okay, good point. Next.
Okay, so, moving on to kind of, again, continue to answer the question of how do you get to a grade even within the individual indices? You get that, you get that index value for every part of the system, and then you combine to get the overall index for each building and each student group, and then you get to these overall labels. So this is within each... Indicator as well as overall, right? This, or is it, yeah. So these would be the cuts. So if you got to the percent of your goal met, so remember that example before where they got to 63.64% of their goal met, that would be a D in that indicator, right? Sorry, this thing, this example, if they had index value of 63.64, that'd be a D. And that's how you get to this thing.
But 34% is a D. I thought it was 60.
Each category would be different.
34% is their proficiency rate, but what we're saying is that is, that proficiency rate is a percent of the goal. And the percent of the goal is 60%, it would be a D.
Again, this is very complicated. Because again, you're going...
It's very important, too.
Yeah, it is, it is. I know, but we gotta get it so we are explaining it right, so...
You're saying you have to weight it, because it's 31 out of...
So if we say 75% is the goal, right? You want 75% of your kids to reach the goal. So in each, so if 75% reached the goal, then back on that other slide, in each category, there was a different percentage.
Is this the slide you want me to show?
And then based on that percentage, then you take it to the grade.
So you have a, right. You have a value that the school did in any given indicator. You have how many kids were proficient, or how many kids graduated. You also have a target. So to figure out how close you are to the target, you have to take the value and divide it by the target. It's like a points possible on a test. If you get 50 points, or 60 points on a test, and there's 100 points, 60%, you got a 60%, you got a D. It's actually just like a grading system, like, you take the value...
It just seems so arbitrary.
Yeah, who's to say 55% is right? Maybe 60, or maybe 20.
Well, again, we anchored those targets, looking at a distribution...
A one-standard deviation, is that...
No, we just picked, we looked at...
You just picked a number.
Well, we didn't just pick a number, we didn't just throw a dart.
So, we took, the 75th percentile is the point at which 25% are doing better, 75% are doing worse, and that is an ambitious but attainable goal, which is something we have to set in this. So those numbers are included in data.
You know, if you wanted to say, let's go to 70, it didn't change much. You wanna go to 80, it didn't change much, so it's not...
Right, so we didn't just pick a number, we looked at how we're, how we're performing now, and tried to pick a number that was ambitious but attainable. So that's where the target comes from. And then you have a value for every school, how much they actually did, and how much you wanted them to do, and you divide how much they did by the goal, and that's your percent, and then that translates into a grade. Again, think, just like any test you took as a kid in school.
All right, next.
Yeah. I guess I've referenced this a couple times, this is on slide, I think it should be right there. This is on slide, or page nine. These are all the transparency dashboard elements that are proposed. These are all the transparency dashboard elements that are proposed across six categories. This would accompany the A to F. Just calling out school climate and culture, let me just talk about a couple of things down there. A question was brought up about safety and bullying. There's a couple of ways we would get at that. One is those climate student surveys, that would be voluntary for schools to take, but they are culture, climate, and get into some of the safety, bullying, school climate issues. The support titles is where we would get at librarians, counselors, school nurses. Suspension, we want to collect suspension data on all students, so that we can use that as a proxy. We know suspension is an important behavioral indicator, and it would allow us to do targeted supports to schools and districts who have high rates of suspension, or more importantly, disproportionate rates of suspension, and then expulsion data. So that is where, there's a lot of safety, school safety, climate, and culture that we would handle on the dashboard. There was a lot of discussion about having those be part of the A to F. In the end, the recommendation of the teams, and our recommendation coming forward, is that we need to, they're new data, they're not data we have right now, so we need to focus on getting those data, and then using them transparently with schools, and then possibly, they would be eligible for a higher stakes use in the future, but.
And if a district wanted to celebrate some other news, they could include that in here.
Yes. And there will be a points of pride aspect to this somehow, too, like here's what we want to talk about. Yes. I'm sorry, I, you're supposed to call him.
Yep, Pam. Yeah, you're the boss, go ahead.
So, just around the wraparound services that we've talked about, I would hope that that's more than just an add-on. How are we, and I, you know, we've talked about this, especially when I see the school absenteeism, how are we taking that into account, the health, that we're promoting schools that really, really provide intentional wraparound services for the students that address their health and wellbeing?
Do you want to know where it is in the accountability system, or are you talking?
Yes, in the accountability system. I know we've talked about this before, and you answered that question.
No, it's, it's a good, let me back up. So you're right that there's not per se, a point of the accountability system for wraparound services. I think the chronic absenteeism is the indicator that they would be held on, held accountable on, that would, but again, accompanying all of this is support, and that whole child comprehensive needs assessment and the support system. So we are including a couple pieces in the high stakes part, and then I would argue, if we add in time spent to access, or access to fine arts, music, physical education, that expands what we're holding them accountable on, in terms of things outside of simply, you know, ELA and math courses, for example.
Okay, I'll just have to listen more closely, because I don't know if we're really strengthening that, because we hear schools talk about, and we talk about the need for this all the time. And schools know that there's a need for this, that they do not have the support, nor anything that's driving them to do that. Even in the schools where there's supports for the special needs students. I've seen where some schools are becoming better magnets for that, because there are certain wraparound supports even for those, those students. So how do we incentivize, not even just incentivize that, but just make sure that schools are really allowed the space to do that? Driving them to ensure that they're providing that.
Right.
But I think if we get at those issues, that Cassandra's talking about, as well as Tom is talking about, those are the things that we're going to have to provide space and drivers, or help schools to be driven to do that.
Right. I think you're right, that there is not a clear indicator, especially in the high stakes part, for do you have wraparound services? I think we picked some of it up in the transparency.
And I know that that was a big piece in ESA. I mean, that was something that was really picked up in ESA.
Well, the whole child, right.
So where do we get there?
I think we get there, and that's the next portion of the thing. I think we get there more in the supports. And so changing our, in ESA, I think if we did a presentation to you guys, where we talked about in ESA, needs rule, so that, that comprehensive needs assessment that goes across not just what are your academic needs, but what are all, what are your safety needs, your health needs, your nutrition needs? Once you identify them, then what is your plan to address them? So it's, we pick it up in the needs assessment, and then the evidence-based support plan, with pieces called out in the accountability system, but not all of it. I think you're right that there are, we're not holding them accountable on whether or not they have a positive behavior improvement system. But that would be something we would look for them to be using if they, you know, if they identify in the needs assessment that they're having trouble with behavior. Or if we see with suspension that they have disproportionate suspension rates, we would do targeted outreach to say, you're using suspension, do you know that you're suspending your African-American young men at three times the rate of everybody else? This, are you using or sort of just, like, what are you doing? This is, so I think you're right in saying there's not a strong.
And I'm thinking, like, even like the school-based health centers, you might be able to tell me better than I, or Kyle, or someone, but if you, we're seeing the drops in absenteeism, right? When we see those types of supports that are provided, when you have certain programs in schools, you're seeing an environment where special needs children are better supported by their peers.
Yep.
So, you know, how are we taking these types of things into account?
Right.
Eileen and Tom?
There's, I agree completely with Pam. The problem is what schools can do by themselves, and what it takes other state agencies to do with them. So, am I right in thinking that what you're saying is that ESA can get at the things that schools should be doing, and have the capability of doing? But you can't address right now what you might hope for as a collaboration that would take the department, the state board of ed, or the governor's commission, or some other entity outside to make that happen?
I think that's a piece of it. And I also just think, we wouldn't necessarily want to drop a school's letter grade because they don't have a school-based health center. We want them to have a school-based health center. We don't want to punish people who don't have a school-based health center, but we do want to push them to get one. So I think that's where we're trying to include more things in transparency, and then that partnership with low, you know, with any district within our school, and then strategic investments. Like maybe we don't care about everybody having a school health center, but I would argue any partnership district probably should, if you've got F schools, or if you've got, so I, I think that's the difference, Pam, is that it's not, they're, we're talking now about the high stakes accountability system, it's not as represented in there.
And then I just, and I also want to make sure that if we're encouraging a school, I mean, I've seen where schools are not provided the opportunity, or they don't, they're choosing between, you know, making sure that we're making, putting all of the testing skills in place to make sure that students are going to meet whatever the testing grades are, but we're not putting that same amount of effort, or some effort, into making sure that we have people who are going out and seeking opportunities with community partners to provide other supports for the, for the students. I don't know if that makes sense, but we've got to give schools that opportunity, that space to collaborate better with their partners, so that they can provide the necessary supports for the students that need that extra encouragement. But it's not having that time, or not, or having to weigh out what's more important, because this kind of supplies that.
Can I have Tom's place? I thought it was Eileen.
Oh, Eileen.
I know, that was my only comment, because in order to make this happen in a meaningful way, and the schools in Detroit where it's taking place, it's, it's changing kids' lives slowly but surely. So, having listened to these rural educators, Tacoma Falls has 4,000 square miles of district. It's the largest school district east of the Mississippi. And they don't have a way to do this, or in rural districts where there's just one elementary middle and high school, they don't know how to make this work. So it's going to have to be a partnership in some way, that's an agency-to-agency partnership to change the way that these services are provided. And it can't just happen with the school saying, wait, 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 can you put this in my school?
Could the non-academic item be parental satisfaction? Some third-party, objective way to measure? Because I, visiting the two schools on the list of 38, you know, I got the sense that parents could send their kids somewhere else, but they've chosen to send them here for many, who knows what various reasons? And that, you know, maybe it's because this school particularly is actually teaching phonics, and the kids are, they see their kids are reading. They may not do well on the Common Core aligned test, but, or they're not teaching the fuzzy math that's in Common Core, they're actually teaching real math, and the parent likes that. And so I just wonder, could we, could that be one of the non-academic factors, is parental satisfaction?
Anything could be a non-academic factor, in theory. And this was something our technical advisory committee actually brought up, is that parental satisfaction does not correlate with poverty. So we can look into that. That would require us mandating parents take surveys of satisfaction, and include that in.
That could be a sample that could be done, and, I mean, I, no, I think it could be done.
I mean, most, most districts are doing parent surveys these days.
Right. And the action teams talked about this and decided against including survey data in the high stakes part of the system, because survey data is an imperfect instrument, and based on perceptions, and that's a challenge. It's not that we can't, we could.
I just think that, I mean, the state is supposed to be meeting, you know, satisfying the parent. The parent is letting us educate their child. So the focus really should be on parental satisfaction, in my mind. And so I think that it should be reflected. There are schools that may not be rated very well, but they have very high parental satisfaction, and I think that that's important. And you can get around, I think you could do it very objectively, some, you know, so that it, you know, I can't stand it when departments say, we measured ourselves and we're doing wonderful. You know, but it could be very objective, and I think it could be done if we wanted to.
And I just want to say, Tom, just like you said earlier, that you don't want to say testing and that all the time, when you say anti-C common core things, I hold the right to have disagreeing opinion on that. But I'm not going to argue about it. But we'll do that someday.
It does seem to me that there is a host of interesting and relevant information, like whether your district has busing or transportation or not, which might be relevant to parents, might give us a clue as to, you know, why one district can afford a planetarium program and another district has to put its money into transportation, which I don't know that we can account in this. Another, another fact might be average teacher, student-teacher ratio, or other, or you know, whether you got a winning football season, or, I know that's so important to many of our parental satisfaction. But, so I think the challenge is narrowing, narrowing this report card down to factors that are, as I say, what are the ends that we want, and then leave the means to the, to the local districts, and they're, hopefully, you know, will have a link to a, hopefully have a link to a district webpage that will provide all that other information that's of interest. But, but I think we, our challenge is to narrow it down to what are the, what are the things that we, the state, are really interested in? And again, I think that's students growing, growth, and this, in a secondary sense, the proficiency.
And, I mean, I put these back up so we can maybe ask that question. You know, proficiency, growth, graduation? I think we want Michigan students to graduate. I, as a parent, expect my child to graduate from high school, not to not. The academic enrichment, if we look at those, you know, I think we want kids to be there, we want them taking advanced coursework. So I think it's a good point, Dr. Zyley, about, are these the ends we care about for, for Michigan students? And then, did we get all the ends? Or the most important ends? Maybe these aren't all the ends. I mean, we all probably want Michigan students to be good citizens, but that doesn't mean we're necessarily going to put it in there. Do we get all the ends, and then the means? Yes. And I think you're highlighting something that we'll get to in the supports, that ESA really is about districts having more say over the means. And, and thinking about what are your needs, what are all the possible means, what's the evidence behind the means, and then pick ones that make sense for your context. Not every solution will make sense in every context. And so, yeah, a rural district with transportation issues can't take that money and put in a, something else, if they can't get kids to the thing. So we have to, we have to be context-specific with a big state like Michigan especially. So, I think those are really good points.
Okay, you've got about 20 minutes before lunch.
We're actually through the accountability part, I can start on supports.
All right. So what page are you taking, still?
Page 11. There should have been a slide, like a title slide change.
So we're done with, we're done with the accountability portion?
No, we are through the slide, it's, I mean.
We're never done unless you're done.
Well, but we're, so, as the, I guess I should have asked this early on, is this all in draft form? I mean, I, I look at what other states that are shooting for April, their drafts came out in November, December, I think I, several of us have articulated that we're very concerned with the April date, but is there, is what we just went over in a document that is official, that is like a proposed draft?
We're going to give you at the board meeting next week, the document.
And you've seen drafts of it all throughout, so one of the counts that we did, it was six board presentations, this makes seven, next week makes eight. So we've shown, what Michigan has done is we've shown the plan in its iteration, so drafts have come out. So last month, we looked at that paper that articulated, we've seen early drafts, we've talked accountability here before, we talked assessment. Like the superintendent said, next week, you'll get the official full plan, an executive summary, a stakeholder engagement document, and a PowerPoint that will have all of this information. We won't go through all of it, but compiling it all into one place. So basically, taking six months of presentations and plans, and putting them into that one final draft plan to open up for public comment.
Right, because things have changed, right? And so we want to make sure we're showing you.
That's part of the engagement with stakeholders.
That's part of getting people's opinion, is you change once you hear some things. So we will get you at the board meeting next week, what we are, at that point, we're saying is final.
Yep.
We may change it after you have further suggestions, obviously.
Well, and it has to go out for public comment.
And then it goes out for another 30-day public comment.
Yep. Other questions on accountability, before I move on to supports?
But again, we're here all day, and can ask any question you want at any time. Okay?
Okay, so supports for schools, I think we covered a lot of this, I just wanted to highlight some major parts of this. And again, I'm glad that the accountability discussion led us to a discussion of supports, because that's how it should be. It shouldn't just be, great, we have an accountability system, it should be an accountability system, and what, how is it going to ensure that we get districts to support saying they need to improve? But very specifically, ESA boils down to this whole child, well-rounded education, comprehensive needs assessment, driving districts toward those evidence-based 10-in-10 practices, but allowing space for innovation. We talked about this some, I think it was two board meetings ago, maybe, so I just wanted to pause on this. What that means is, we know that multi-tiered systems of support are a best practice, or an evidence-based best practice. We want districts using them, they're key to our 10-in-10. So if we went into a district and, and they did their comprehensive needs assessment, and they said, you know, we are, our ELA proficiency levels are low in our early grades, our first thing would be to say, are you using an MTSS system? Like you really should be using an MTSS system, and here's the components of that, that are based in evidence. If a district was like, yes, we are, but also we want to pilot the use of an iPad-based game system, or something. Okay. They have space for innovation, they would have to provide some of the evidence base. Why do we think this thing will work? We're going to, or how are we going to collect evidence to show that it's working? But they would have space to innovate. So it's this flexibility within structure, and then really overall, providing as much flexibility to districts as we can, based on the results of that CNA, and then moving toward that reduced reporting and administrative burden for districts. So what that looks like, and now we move into implementation of this, which is going to be a project for us to work on as a whole enterprise. One comprehensive CNA that happens less frequently, so if you're doing this really comprehensive CNA every year, it's not a reduction, it's, it's more. Less frequent submission of school and district improvement plans, and then revising and streamlining our grant processes. So none of these things are like as exciting to talk about at some level, as like accountability or assessment, but they are the guts of change in this system, they're the deep drivers that will actually change something about how districts interact with us, and, and our ability to provide supports in a meaningful way. So, we, again, this has not been contentious at any point, so we have not spent a lot of time on it, but I just wanted to bring it back and make sure you were aware since the point of this was a in-depth discussion. Special populations, very, being very intentional about our supports for all kinds of special populations. In title world, special populations usually means English learners, migrant, homeless, foster, there's, there's a list of them. So including that in the district's comprehensive needs assessment, providing equitable access to this Title I funding, and then this professional development, technical assistance and support. And then we've talked about this as well, the Title IV block grant. So there were 49 former individual grant opportunities in ESEA that were replaced by one block grant system under Title IV. And so it's, the great thing is now districts have all kinds of flexibility to use that money as they see fit across, you know, based on their comprehensive needs assessment. The not-so-great thing is that the federal government did not put as much money into the block grant as were in the 49 programs. So it's a pretty massive cut. So flexibility with no money, but hopefully there will be money in the future.
And were there any, and that was a question Representative Kelly and I were at a discussion last week, and I think that that was, that, that was a question. I couldn't understand if they were mentioning that there was something being held here at the department that wasn't going to go to the locals, and I didn't know if that was coming with some additional supports or is that all at the federal level?
So, you know, there was a point where, in the title, that they're making us keep an additional 3%, so that does reduce the allocation to some districts. We had a choice to keep another 3% and we chose not to keep the additional second 3% because of the impact on districts. So districts are being impacted in their title allocations. Some are getting an increase, most are getting a decrease, and it's really based on one less money from the feds, A, and B, that they're making us keep an additional 3%. Now that 3% is going to go back out and help the bottom-performing districts. It's not for us to hire staff, it is for services to those low-performing districts.
That's in, and that's in Title I. There's a similar situation in Title II and Title IV where most of it is a flow-through. A portion is for admin, and then there's an additional portion that's optional that's for state activities, and that's, that's where the.
Michigan's not going to take it.
Michigan, again, it gets a little, so in Title I, like, like Superintendent just said, the 7% that is for, the 7% is, is the set aside you have to take. There's an additional 3% that we could have taken and we didn't, we declined to take that. In Title II, which we'll talk about more later today, there is, I'm going to get the percents wrong, there's a couple set asides that aren't for staff but are for statewide activities, and we are choosing to take those to focus on teacher and principal leadership. But again, not to hire staff to do statewide activities. Title IV allows you to take 1% for state activities. We would take it if, right now, there's zero money in Title IV. It's, it's in the continuing resolution from the feds, so we can't take, I mean, we can take 1% of zero, but.
Still zero.
Doesn't really help. But we would take it and invest in something that was a 10-in-10 driver, but it's a small amount of money. But again, any of those state activities monies are not for staff. They are for investments on behalf of.
They will get to the locals.
Yes.
Okay. And if there's any summary of that, that's a lot.
Yep, I know, sorry.
Okay, that's okay.
There are, just so you are, so I can be really transparent, there are admin portions of every grant that comes into the state. Those do support staff, so you can administer the grant, but those are not choices of the state.
But we'll, we'll get you each grant, how much is kept, how much we could have kept.
Yeah.
We'll put that in board briefs.
Okay. Okay, so that was, and then integration of early childhood, we talked about this last month a little bit, but we're really, this is very positive movement in this space for us, integrating the, the quality standard, helping districts blend their title funding with other early childhood funding, helping us focus on age-appropriate evidence-based practices for use in pre-K. And then really, I think it comes down to ensuring alignment and coordination and collaboration of these P-12 programs. So looking at the comprehensive needs assessment, whole child developmental and early learning expectations, social-emotional focus, making sure we have a system that really is P-20 as opposed to early childhood, and then K-12, and then post-secondary, and supporting the education workforce in some various ways. So that's the summary of supports. Supports has been the most fun action team because it's not contentious usually. I mean, they, they had to have some tough talk about what would work and what didn't, and they always took the approach of take everything out of the closet and put some things back in and other things replaced. But largely, it's, it's really good engagement from the field and really good focus on getting us to, how do we support schools? So there's not a lot in there that should raise hackles.
Early childhood?
Actually, next is educator quality. So on page 13.
Page 13.
Page 12 is early childhood.
Yep, I just talked about that. Educator quality, I won't take you through all these slides in like painful detail. You saw an early version of this presentation or a, kind of the point of where is the draft? We brought you a draft of this, I want to say it was November's presentation, or maybe it was October's, I don't remember, where we said, here's what we're looking at in terms of educator quality, and then the team has continued to work, so now there's a little bit more meat on the bones. I think the important things to point out is that educators are the most important resource in our education system, and there's research supporting that teachers, like, we had this discussion today, but teachers literally show up as the most impactful factor for student outcomes and performance, and principals is the second most important. So it's, we really want to invest in the staff that are with our kids every day. And we know that the quality of teaching and leading is a key driver of equitable education outcomes for Michigan students. So we want to work on the quality of the overall workforce, but pay special attention and focus to the workforce in our lowest-performing schools and our schools that serve significant populations of high poverty and minority students. And early versions of the partnership districts, we talked about the school of 100% staffing on day one for these districts. How do we help create and sustain and support a pipeline of high-quality, highly-supported educators to serve our, our students? So this, so we want to focus on these high-impact supports for educators to improve instruction and leadership, and then particularly in those districts where we have those issues. And there's four components. So the foundation for support, these partnerships between district and educator preparation program provider, and then starting strong, supported transitions for new teachers and leaders, maintaining effectiveness with professional learning and development, and strengthening the systems through career pathways and distributed leadership.
Yep.
So we visited a school in Detroit.
Yep.
And the principal was telling us that part of the problem is they lose teachers in the middle of the year.
Absolutely.
Because they can, they can make way more money now that they have experience going into other districts. And so it's not necessarily the day one, although I think that is an important measurement, but it's how do we keep them there so that they're not leaving by November, December, and now they're stuck.
That is a real problem because I, and you can't blame the teacher, right? Particularly if they're a new teacher and they're hired at $28,000, then another district says, come work for us for $38,000. You're going to do it.
Right.
And yet, that is impacting kids. And I know the Governor's Ed Commission, us and other groups are talking about that very problem.
So one aspect we see that would help that, we agree, and so that's why we see this as a partnerships and then the, the ongoing support, something that when you look at programs that only deal with one part of the pipeline, so we'll deal with recruitment or we'll deal with hiring or we'll deal with whatever, it's actually the whole continuity. So you not only have to be recruited and get that context-specific preparation, you have to be supported in staying. And that could include, another thing, studies of teachers have shown that teachers will stay for lower pay in a high-quality context. It's not always about the money. And some of the ineffective programs where they've just paid people bonuses to move to bad settings have shown no effect because $5,000 more doesn't make up for, I can't teach. I can't get the copier to work or any of these things. So one component, one element we want to work on to fix this because we see it as multi-dimensional, is the partnerships with our, our neediest districts, our partnership districts. And partnership in general, but partnership specifically around the district working with educator prep program providers to specifically train teachers who will come into this setting. And there might be incentives or there might be, I mean, if, we will have to think about what it will take to get people to come there and stay there. And then the second is, and I know there are a lot of questions, so I'm sorry, I just want to. Highlight this. The, the supported transitions, so these residency-based programs are programs that provide that intensive mentoring and coaching and access to targeted professional learning. Some of that, it's this extended clinical preparation model, and the hope would be that between a partnership, residency and, and residency-based preparation, and ongoing mentoring and induction, that loss of, oh, we just trained this teacher, now they can get a better job over, you know, two districts over, I don't know if it'll ever be eliminated, but mitigated because they'll, they'll have the positive working environment where they want to stay. So there's more on each of these, but that, I was just trying to address Cassandra's question. I'll pause for who was waiting.
Lupe, and then Dr. Z.
Well, I was going to add more things to.
Yep.
What was said about why teachers leave? Yeah, compensation could be one, but there, when you go into the teaching profession, K-12, you don't go for the money, and you know that. I was making $65,000 when I retired. My daughter had just been an engineer for one year, she was getting the same salary, and I was, had worked for 30-some years. Okay, so the comprehensive, but I stayed 36 years, not because I wanted to be paid more, but there's other factors. The disrespect for the profession, the disrespect for the teacher herself, classroom management problems, class size is a big one. Class size is a real big one. And then you don't, the teachers don't have the support that they need to do their job. So compensation is a very minimal one. There's many other factors. There's a lot of teach, I get calls all the time still. This weekend, I talked to teachers. But anyway, there's teachers that leave that day. At 10:00 tomorrow, I can't handle this anymore. And so they leave. So there's many, many more factors than just compensation.
Very true. Dr. Z, please.
One intriguing idea that I have encountered is the thought that the state set the salaries for all teachers throughout the state with adjustments that might be relevant for cost of living or level of responsibility, that sort of thing. The statewide union then would negotiate with the state for contract as opposed to 500 negotiations going on every couple of years throughout the state. This, this might free local districts from a lot of distractions. It might bring a measure of uniformity and expectation. I'm not sure this is the appropriate time to, to consider such a major change in, in structure, but I hear a lot of talk about, oh, we've got to rethink the old system. Well, I think that's a, an idea that perhaps should be thrown in the mix.
I can say that MASA and the Governor's Ed Commission have had conversations, maybe looking at like the state police who have, I think it's 10, but I could be wrong, like 10 regional-based pay systems so that it takes into account cost of living around the state. So that idea that you mentioned isn't new. It has been floated a couple of times. I'm, I, okay, Lupe, and then Tom.
Just something, as long as they base the salary on the highest school district what they're paid, I would have loved to have been paid what my neighbor teachers were getting. So if they, if they, if the scale is way up here instead of way down here, I think the teachers will approve it.
Tom?
Thank you. Getting back to ESSA, so how much of this is prescriptive in the plan? Again, we don't have a draft, so I don't even know what I'm, I'm looking at a bunch of words. I don't know what is, what's going into ESSA. So I understand from ESSA that it gets the feds out of teacher evaluations.
Absolutely.
So I'm hoping the legislature will hear that too because I, again, it just creates more high stakes, which means the teacher has to follow flawed standards in testing and not do what's best for the child. So I'm hoping that, so now the fed, it's clear that there's nothing in ESSA that talks about evaluations.
No.
Our plan. And then, you know, is there, so what is, is there, is there prescriptive? What do we have to put in ESSA? What do we have to put in ESSA? And so what do, you know, what are they going to say you have to do or not do?
Well, to answer your first question about what's in the plan, this is what's in the plan. These are literally words from the plan that we've put onto PowerPoint slides. So what we had to tell the feds what we were doing is basically, how are you going to use Title II, which is focused on the development of educators, to reach, to support student achievement? And, and also the other requirement is around equitable access. So not only overall quality or overall preparation, but how are we addressing the fact that in Michigan, and I, there's data later on in the slide, in Michigan and in most states, low-income students or minority students are far more likely to be taught by inexperienced and, experienced and, what's the other thing? I just, anyway, inexperienced teachers for sure. Ineffective and inexperienced teachers. So how are we going to change that relationship? So those are the main things that are required in ESSA.
But there's nothing that's going to be restrictive on those funds that we're putting in here and promising to do with them. So we have an open, if we wanted to, for, for schools that we want to address more, more money towards because they're in the bottom percent of, we've tagged them as being failing or in trouble, we could say that we want to use them as Title II to send teachers to learn more about how to teach phonics because it's a better way than what's in Common Core or whatever. So, I mean, we could, we could do those kind of things. There's nothing that we're restricting.
We are, there's two pots of Title II money. One is the flow-through to districts, and so they choose how to spend that. We would provide some guidance around hot, high-leverage strategies that we want them thinking about, but they have the ability. It's, it goes back to the needs assessment. They can spend that money as they, as long as they have a need addressed to it. We are saying that with the Title II state activities, that we would focus on supporting the big buckets of these strategic, these strategic partnerships, supportive transitions, maintaining effectiveness through professional learning and development, and then career pathways. The specificity, no, we're not there yet. We need to keep working that through, but we want to work on, on those buckets. And specifically, the partnership, the strategic district and educator preparation partnerships would be focused on our districts that are our partnership districts.
But working on it doesn't mean that it's going to be in the plan, it's just, we can leave this, we can leave this vague enough.
We outline the big buckets. We don't have.
We can leave it vague enough so that we can work on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Pam, please.
I remember, Abigail was working on that project for the equitable, the access, equitable access to educators.
Yep.
For the name. Which Lupe, maybe you working on that group if it's still going would be helpful, but I'm just hoping that, I'm assuming that that's feeding into this discussion. And then the other question that I, that I have is, I know that I was getting from some educators that Michigan, it looked like they were going towards less stringent or removing the certification process. Is there anything that we've submitted that would make educators think that we're being more lax?
No, I don't think so. No, we've, so just a couple of things about certification. The big one is that this plan doesn't require us to talk about certification at all, so we're not, because certification is a local, not local, it's a state decision. How do states set standards for teachers and, and leaders? The one thing is that probably people have conflated, NCLB had the highly qualified requirement, and ESSA removed the highly qualified requirement. It like, it just went away. So we are left with, what are we as a state going to do about what's the appropriate certification to teach this type of, what certification do you need to teach math? And what does that look like? So Abby Groff Blazak was the lead on this ESSA work and Luke linking with the equitable access. Leah Breen, our director of the Office of Professional Preparation Services, is leading a group on appropriate placement. So we'll bring forward proposals around there. Interestingly, with certification, there's always a tension between wanting high standards and wanting flexibility for locals so that they can, because some locals have trouble finding a physics teacher with a physics endorsement because they are in UUP or wherever. So we've, there's a number of things we've done around there. None of it, I mean, I'm happy to talk about it or bring Leah to talk about it, but none of it is going in here. It's not ESSA-specific, it's our work.
But there was recently a couple of things where districts were having a hard time finding teachers, so we gave them some more flexibility.
Yep.
On how to meet their needs.
So the team, yep.
But we didn't change certification.
No. The team's developed a whole permit structure that has more flexibility around emergency permits or long-term permits for, I as a local, I need someone to teach physics and I have a science teacher who doesn't have a physics endorsement, but I'm positive they can do this content. There's some flexibility for them to, to do it.
Did we ever find out about the survey that was out there for educators, that some of the educators were expressing some?
Probably the appropriate placement survey, I would guess, where we said, you know, if we changed, like, again, that, part of that whole body of work around what is appropriate placement and.
Dr. Z?
My question's been answered.
Okay. All right, we're at lunchtime, so we're going to take a break until 1:30.